With our Commissioner's Status Update Meeting. Today's date is June 10, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. And in attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I think the only thing would move Item 3 to Item 2.
Just switch it with 2.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay with you, Commissioner Everline?
Fine.
Okay. A public comment. Anyone want to speak? Hearing none. We'll go to our first business item. Justice Building Updates, a discussion with David Mendez.
Good morning, David Mendez, with Turner &amp; Townsend here. I do not have an updated cost sheet for you, but I will talk about that a little bit. We received the occupancy, temporary occupancy as of last Friday. I sent that document over to you, so you've got it in case you needed it. But just kind of what that means is that the life safety issues have been taken care of. We can actually start the move-in process if we wanted to. However, we're holding off on that until the furnishings are installed, and that is currently happening as we speak. There's also a little bit of a hitch in, they're working on the building tie-in locations. That's our ADA access, so that's going to prevent that really from being utilized fully. They're working on punch list items. The last thing that they'll do is go through and do final paint touch-ups, and that's currently occurring as well. The furniture installation, as I mentioned, that's currently underway. They're loading from the street and going in one of the windows, so that's going to, that final window seal is going to be important to get until we get the elevators accepted. The state is doing that work. Occupancy, Jeff is working on a plan for moving a department into the building, but we are planning for a grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony to occur between furnishing installation and the staff moving into those. I don't think that would be a good fit for continuity in the building if we were to have that while people are actually in the rooms, working in there. They're starting systems training. This morning was the first. They did the lighting training, so getting staff, maintenance staff, up to speed on how to operate that building. From a cost standpoint, we're finalizing the billings and costs. The contractor has sent out the word, Speak Now or Forever Hold Your Peace, on getting their costs in by this Friday, so I'll be able to give you an update where we stand final budget. But it looks like our contingency costs, right now with everything that we have to be finalized, we've got about $600,000 between the two contingencies, the contractor contingency and the design contingency. So, assuming we'll have less than $100,000, that'll leave a half a million dollars left in our contingencies after all is said and done, plus what we will have left over in the soft cost portion of that, and I'll update that. We've been working on getting that finalized as well. Jeff, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just to clarify a couple of things. As far as the temporary certificate of occupancy, one of the big things to complete is that courtyard where it'll be the staff entrance in between the two buildings on that lower level. Bowden can't do that work until the elevators are operable because that will become our new ADA access to get down to the lower level, and then they can, because that's currently our ADA access for people right now to access that lower level. And so, the elevator inspections are happening this week, and so that's kind of why we still have that one little area fenced off. That Bowden will begin that work next week and then be several weeks in that lower corridor, courtyard area at the lower level between the two buildings. We'll be finished there. And so, once all of those things are completed is when we'll get our final permanent certificate of occupancy for that. As far as furniture schedule, I just want to, I just want to kind of really publicly for the record state that I've heard a lot of people say, "Oh, I've heard we're moving in a week or two weeks," or whatever, from departments, and I'm not sure where those are coming from. We're going to be, you know, the schedule is about five weeks to install the furnishings. Like, if you look right now, all of Garden Avenue just has boxes and boxes and boxes of desks that are sitting there that need to be loaded into the building that arrived this morning. And so, it's, you know, it's a five-week process for us to get all of, you know, there's 60-plus offices, including the judges' chambers, et cetera, and so it's a big process to assemble and build all the furniture that we need to put in there. And so, you know, I think it's going to be mid-July that we'll be, you know, probably starting the move into that building. You know, so they're scheduled to be working through July 9th is their tentative schedule right now to be done with furnishing install. So, I'm kind of thinking right after that is when we'll plan that open house. I'll send you guys a couple of date options to see what works for your schedules here in the next couple of days to plan that kind of ribbon-cutting open house where, you know, we can have the building open for the public for some tours, and then after that, we will start the move-in process for the different departments that are moving over there. I think we'd go probably third floor prosecutors, then AMP, and then judges' chambers, and then we'd be able to open for essential full business after that. So, it's kind of the tentative schedule, and I'll send you some more information regarding that. And there's also a lot of IT coordination. We're setting up all the computers and networks and things that, you know, is going to be ongoing over these next couple of weeks as well to get that building fully functional and operational. And the last thing is that now that we do have the temporary certificate of occupancy, if any of you want a tour, I'd be happy to take any of you through at any time, and please just let me know if you'd like to see it as it's, you know, near completion now. That's all I have.
No, any questions?
I don't think so.
No? Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we're going to actually do Item 3. This is occupancy value correction, AIN 142-867 and AIN 344-279. It's a discussion item, and we have Jill Smith.
Jill Smith, Chief Deputy Treasurer, for the record. I have two AINs that I've presented to the Commissioners. These two parcels were included in the occupancy roll. They got their occupancy valuation notice, and then when the taxes were being calculated, they had inadvertently been inactivated by the mapping department, and so Dyson recalculated the values at the very moment that they were inactivated, and for whatever reason, and we don't understand why, not only did it zero out the occupancy value in our system, it zeroed out the land taxes. We've already collected first half for the land taxes, so it pushed that money into, like, an overpayment. I just wanted direction from the board. I think I know what that direction is going to be, but before we create a tax notice on a parcel that will show no value in the system, I want the board to direct me as to which direction they'd like us to go.
Thoughts?
Can this be corrected similarly like the last ones?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's probably my thought.
Well, they've already paid the first half, right? So, really, you know, maybe just give them a few extra days to pay the second half and get a corrected notice to them.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the proper thing to do.
Yep. So, there you go. Anything else?
That was it? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up, Item 2. Rose of Sharon Centennial Trail Easement Request. It's a discussion item, and I have Scott Porman listed.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for some time to present this to you. It's my privilege to represent the Rose of Sharon Enterprises Incorporated. That's a Idaho corporation. Principal is a fellow named Bob Helstrom. Bob is not new to Cootney County. He and his business developed the Camelot Estates Mobile Home Park in Post Falls, and so they've been around a long time. They are working with the city of Post Falls to develop some property that sits between the Centennial Trail and Interstate 90 in Post Falls. This is McGuire, to give you an idea of its location. So, it's these two long skinny parcels right between, right away for I-90 and the Centennial That one and that one. These parcels have already been annexed into the city with an R1 zoning, which allows a density of five units per acre. Rose of Sharon also owns this little parcel here that they are currently under contract to sell to the city with a access road coming through from Lundie Boulevard will go through that parcel to provide access to, a secondary access to the subdivision that's proposed.
Where's the primary access?
Primary is off of McGuire. If you're familiar with this area, Lundie continues into this Mobile Home Park, and it doesn't go any further east. So, coming out of that secondary access, we don't anticipate very many residents of the new subdivision using it for ingress and egress because they're going to have to come back out to McGuire anyway. So, they would be basically going east for the privilege of then turning and coming back west to be able to get anywhere. But that's something that the city wanted for emergency ingress and egress primarily. The road through this parcel will be gated. The gate will be closed. It will not be locked, of course. So, the road will come off of Lundie, go through this little parcel here, and then across the trail with your permission, and then a central road down through the middle of the subdivision. The, kind of, give you an idea of what the plat will look like in that area. So, here's Lundie coming through this parcel that the city will own, and then across the trail, and then on through down to McGuire. This proposed trail crossing has been obviously requested by the city. It's my understanding that Friends of the Trail are not opposed to this. The design intended will have what they call a tabletop crossing, so as cars go north or south across the trail, they'll be coming up over a raised area. That intended and designed to slow people down, although I don't think anybody's going to be able to get up to any kind of speed coming that close from Lundie or coming out of the subdivision. But nevertheless, the design will have not only the tabletop crossing, but signage, and then obviously the gate that they'll have to stop and open and close if they want to come in and out that way. As for, as far as trail traffic, that tabletop design will not interfere because it'll be, have a transition that will make it a nice smooth incline and then decline as opposed to more of a large speed bump you can think of the tabletop design for cars. Rob Paulus, engineer with the city, is here, and John Manley is here with the planning department, the city planning department, if you have any technical questions. But essentially, we're asking for permission to create that trail crossing as a component of this city-approved subdivision, and we think it will, well, certainly will provide what could be emergency egress in a worst-case scenario, but probably not be getting a lot of day-to-day traffic, just for the practical reality of people would be going out of their way to use that exit or entrance unless they're, well, I think the city's got plans for a wave park in this area. That's part of the reason why they're acquiring this parcel from the developer, and so there may be some use associated with that in the future once that's developed, but otherwise, this will just be primarily an emergency exit for the subdivision and for infrequent or maybe weekly garbage pickup. I think that's the primary users. Questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, let's, it's already there. So, that area over there, I'm familiar with that, with, you know, fishing and all that kind of stuff. That's a dangerous corner in that, there can be some really dangerous undertows, and people have died over there in that place. And so, I would urge whoever's the powers that be is going to do it that make sure that it's very safe.
I don't have any details. I've just heard the term "wave park," so I'm not sure what my mind goes to thinking of a wave park.
Yeah, it's that part right down there below the, when it makes the curve down there.
Further south?
Yeah. A lot of people have, well, not a lot of people, but there's people that have died there, drowned.
Okay.
Keep that in mind. Commissioner Duncan, do you have?
Yes. Can you, by any chance, do you know where the Post Falls portion of the trail is versus the county's portion?
You know, you might have to, Mr. Porman, you might have to bring your microphone a little closer to the end of the table where you're at.
There is, Post Falls parcel begins right adjacent to where your portion is. So, they have this piece, this piece, and this is the county part. Right at that same location. There are some other existing utilities that run underground through here. The subdivision's actually going to be looping to the city sewer system and then providing additional easement through to what I think is going to be a future land application site across the river. But city folks can certainly give you more specific answers about that.
I have a couple of questions. You know, we put together a document that kind of details what, you know, how does this request benefit the citizens in Cootney County, which I'm glad we're finally doing because, you know, as a policymaking body, we should have policies as to why we do what we do, especially when it's giving permission to developers because they're making money, and it shouldn't be at the expense of other people. So, it mentioned that it expands access for the trail users. Is there a problem right now with people on the trail wanting to get to West Lundie Boulevard, and that this is actually solving a problem, or are you just suggesting that it's just more options for people, and it could be a perceived benefit?
It is certainly another point of access from public roads and surrounding private properties, another point of access to come from Lundie through to the trail. I mean, I know there are lots of places along the trail where the public has access. I, and honestly, I don't know what plan the city might have to provide for parking or, you know, other sorts of facilities like that that would encourage trail access from that point, but certainly it does create another point of access, you know, we think a safe crossing at the same time.
And who would yield? The cars or the bikes?
Oh, the cars.
The cars would yield to the bikes?
Yeah, the signage is part of the design that makes it clear that vehicles are approaching the trail.
And what about the neighborhood? Did anyone ask anyone if they want more access through their neighborhood?
The annexation process and the subdivision application and hearings certainly gave the public opportunity to comment, and to my knowledge, there was no opposition to the trail crossing as part of this.
Okay. But no one asked? No one actively said, "Hey, you know, we're thinking of doing this. Is this going to be an issue?" Outside of just the normal notice process?
To my knowledge.
Yeah. The only issue I really have with this is, one, you know, what are the conditions that we issue easements across a trail for bikes? I mean, the point of having a bike trail is so that they're not on the roads, and here we are making roads cross the bike trail. That's the first thing. The second thing is that the county maintains large portions of this trail, and the cities have basically said to the county, and this is something Commissioner Everline, you may not be aware of because this happened before you came on board. We-
It was still there at the same time.
Yeah. Well, the city said, "We do not want the county to collect a parks impact fee, but we're responsible for maintaining the trail through Post Falls." So, we're being told we can't capture a fee to maintain a trail and have infrastructure, but we want you to approve easements across the trail. So, I would be more open to the idea, since Post Falls is collecting these impact fees and other fees, to have them annex the entire trail into the city so we don't have to deal with it, and it becomes their problem, and they can decide when and how often they want to cross the trail. But the problem is, is that we're put in this situation where we have to pay to maintain something, and the city wants us to provide easement so that they can continue to grow. They're the ones that wants to, that want to annex the land. They're the ones who want to grow. They're the ones who want to, that demand that we have this access across the trail, so they should be responsible for the trail. And if that were the case, it'd be a lot easier for me to say yes, but it's not the case, and so I'm very reluctant at this point in time.
I can confirm that if approved, this crossing is not going to cost the county anything. The developer and the subdivision will be responsible for maintenance of any improvements or associated with the crossing.
Well, maybe today, but we'll be dealing with these issues in the future. There'll be another development or another request for an easement, and I just assume give it to Post Falls. You know, let Post Falls take over the responsibility of it. What happens if the HOA decides not to spend money to do this? I mean, what is the county supposed to get in there and say, "You need to, you need, you have to spend the money on it because we believe it's not being maintained properly"?
Actually, I think you'd have a better remedy, and Mr. Braden can certainly speak to this, if the easement has conditions that must be satisfied, and they're not being satisfied. The easement can terminate, which takes all the fun out of having improvements there, so.
Look, that's not realistic because the easement is required for emergency vehicles, and so we're being put in a position to terminate an easement that now makes, basically, they won't issue the permits to build without the emergency access. So, what are we supposed to, terminate the easement and then put a gate up and say, "No more"?
Well, yeah, I think actually that could happen, and the fire department or EMS could still have access even through a locked gate. You'd just have to put a Knox box on, and they can get through, but nobody else would be able to. If worst-case scenario came to that.
Well, if that was an option, then why aren't we doing that?
I think that's pretty much what I said last time this was brought before a public meeting, is I would support emergency vehicle traffic only and not ingress and egress from the development, but I thought that Post Falls would not accept that.
Well, I'll let them answer that question.
Okay.
You know, they're not-
Well, if you're, if you're suggesting that that's a possibility, then let's explore that possibility.
Yeah. If the, if the city would allow a locked gate with the emergency vehicle access for, well, what we think is going to be the primary purpose for the crossing, emergency egress, then that'd be fine with my client. They have no desire to-
Okay.
-to have more traffic going through that neighborhood than is absolutely necessary.
And if for some reason that's not possible, then I would support an annexation as well through the entire city of Post Falls, which I don't know, maybe it stops at Beck. I don't know the exact border, but that, I would definitely support an annexation so then that way the county's not stuck in the middle between somebody who wants to make use of their, you know, a local developer wants to make use of their property, but yet we're kind of being asked to take on a responsibility that we do not have funding for, and also something that does not benefit the trail users, so.
Yeah. I think if you want to do it, you do it and make them do it. Because it's a burden for us. When the last time that this went around, which was like eight years ago, nine years ago, seven years ago, whatever it was, it was still the same problem. Nobody wanted to do anything with it, and it ended up doing nothing. And it was, and all those trails were up there prior to, many years ago.
If I'm hearing you correctly, if the county, if the city was willing to accept ownership of this stretch of trail, the county would just deed it over?
The entire stretch of trail through Post Falls, so we don't have to deal with this issue again in the future. So-
Even, even going across, over, continuing on, yep, right there.
Within city limits, yeah.
And it'd be, you know, it'd probably be much better for the people that live over there and play over there.
And that's all the way to State Line, I assume?
I think Beck Road. So, we would maintain Beck Road to State Line.
Well, we can certainly report back to the city and get them talking to your folks and see if that's something they would consider.
Yeah. So.
All right. Well, yeah, unless you have any other questions for me or for city staff or-
Any other questions?
Snarky ones, so I won't respond.
All right.
I won't respond.
Commissioner Duncan.
Do you?
Sure.
So, that's one of the many services we offer.
Yeah. I'm just sorry that your client is put in this position where it's really being unfairly asked of the county, so, yeah.
Well, and, yeah, and I apologize for not being better prepared to address this issue. I did not anticipate this coming up. I wasn't aware of the history that this was a problem for you guys in the past, so, but, yeah, I, you know, I think it, I don't even know why we have a patchwork of ownership of the trail.
Because somebody didn't do their job properly.
It almost seems like it might make sense for there to be a new entity created that controls the entire thing, state, state line to state line, if that was, you know, wanting to make this comprehensive.
Well, if you'd like to take that on, you're certainly welcome to, but the reality is that, you know, I think from the county's perspective, certainly just speaking as one member of this board, Post Falls is the one that is requiring these things. Post Falls is the one that it falls, that trail falls inside their city limits, so they should be the ones taking care of it, especially when you add the fact that the cities have said to us point-blank, "We do not want you to collect your own parks fee because we have one too, and we feel like our citizens are going to be double taxed when it comes to growth," because that's one of the challenges in this state, is that growth legitimately does not pay for itself. And so, if people want to develop and people want to, you know, profit off of these developments, then the community should at least have some opportunity to have a say in how this growth occurs and who's going to pay for that growth.
Love and clear?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Item 4. Assessor Requested On-Base Changes For B.O.C.C. Meetings. Assessor Belikovacs.
Commissioners, Belikovacs, thank you. I'm approaching the board today to, in the spirit of collaboration, to ask the board to consider a possible tweak to the on-base system. Just to put this in, frame this in perspective, this is really a ministerial request. It's, it just seems like it could be something that just could be quickly done. But the on-base system is a system used by the county whereby the various departments make requests to the Board of County Commissioners. Right now, it's a workflow process. Right now, that, I'm not sure if I got this in the right spot. The way that workflow process works, I'll give you an example. If a department has a contract, one of the prompts asks if a legal opinion is required. The person marks yes. If you mark yes, it prompts you to attach a copy of the legal opinion. My request is something along the lines of that, similar. We have various- We have various agenda items that come before the board, it can come before the board at a two o'clock meeting, or a tax cancellation meeting, or a B O E hearing, or a status update meeting like it was today, where there's a valuation change, and, and so it, there's some randomness that, that has entered into this. My, my purpose is to make sure that we are contributing, we, in the assessor's office, are contributing to the agenda to the extent that we need to. We have some 97,000 parcels, we have six districts, we have lots of people that are working on these parcels, and there can be any number of reasons or, or causes why something can go awry. And so it's, it's important for us to have the right people attending the meeting, and so if we could make a, a minor tweak to the on-base system so that the person making the request could be prompted by a question, is this a valuation change? If they mark yes, then they could be prompted by another question, have they worked with the assessor's office, have they contacted the assessor's office? And then if they have not contacted the assessor's office, maybe they could be directed and prompted to come contact us, so we can be involved. We, we have staff that can respond to these issues, and like anything, people need some lead time to work on some issues. So that's my request, if the board would consider amending that on-base system to add that workflow.
Any questions?
No questions, probably just a, well, actually, that's not true, I do have a question. So item three on today's agenda, did you have sufficient notice to research that?
Sufficient notice to research what?
Item three on this agenda this morning.
Well, I wasn't involved in item three.
Okay, so Dyson was, Dyson sat there with our chief deputy from the treasurer's office, so was he not aware?
I don't know that he wasn't, I mean, he was here, obviously, he worked with Jill, Jill involved him, but I'm just asking for a way to work it into the system. If the board's not willing to do it, that's, that's fine, but, but, you know, there's, there's, there's entered some randomness to our meetings. Sometimes we have the meetings on Mondays, sometimes we have them on Tuesdays, sometimes they're on Wednesdays. I'm just trying to suggest a path forward for a more consistent approach, so that, so that we're not, it's not subject to an email, and looking at an email, and, and it's reactionary. I would prefer that it not be reactionary.
So how many events have occurred prior to today that are, is driving this request? And, and the reason why is because, you know, you're asking us to change the way we do something, and so it should be a, this has been going on for a long time, and it's really becoming a challenge, although I don't think this board has seen any challenges up to this point. How, you know, as opposed to, well, the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple of issues, so we want you to change the way we're doing something. That, to me, is more of a knee-jerk reaction than it is to say, let's change our system because it doesn't work properly, because this has been going on for months and months and months. You know, these valuation issues seem to be a, more a recent phenomenon, where valuations are going to zero, and so that's why we're having these issues now. I don't know why we're having these issues, but we are. We, I certainly haven't dealt with them beforehand, I don't know if Commissioner Duncan or Eberline has ever dealt with property valuations going to zero before.
Well, Dyson was here, and he spoke to that issue as to what the causes were today. The, the randomness that we're seeing is, is more of a recent nature, there was a change in the board composition in terms of who's the chair, we have seen some meetings change. You know, again, it's, it's, it's a request to try and interject some consistency, I'm asking that we enhance the system, so I, I don't, I wouldn't characterize it as a system change in terms of what you're describing it. There are opportunities to improve on processes, that's all I'm simply presenting to the board today, is an opportunity, is a way of improving and enhancing the way the system works. It's not turning the system on its head, it's simply adding one more, or a couple of steps of questions, so that various individuals are prompted by it, that's all.
Can, can we add that to the notes? Can we just make it something that is added in the notes by your staff, so that way we don't have to change anything in the system, and it just addresses these issues?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by added to the notes by my staff.
Well, I mean, we have a whole section of detailed description of agenda item.
Are you looking at on basis, is that what you're, what you're describing?
I'm looking at.
It's cut and paste from an email.
Okay, well, then, there you go, so. We have notes or something in these.
Yes, 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 we do.
So we could add it to notes.
Yeah, but I, I think what the assessor is saying is, when it involves his office, he's not giving sufficient notice, and I would say, he may not get, he would get notice Friday afternoon when the, when the board packet's published anyway. So I don't necessarily think that this is a necessary change today. Again, to your point, I, I haven't seen this in six years, so.
Commissioners, what I'd like to clarify is, when the agenda, your agenda is published on Friday, typically that's an agenda that's published at noon on Friday for the following week. Please bear in mind that that would be the first notice that we get of the item if we work strictly off your agenda. We have people that have planned vacations, we have people that have, have other scheduled meetings that are out of the office, some individuals who are assigned to this A I N, this property, may not be available to answer the question. I'm simply asking for lead time. This goes back to a question that Leslie, you and I had in August of 2022, you, I, and Chris Filios, we talked about tax cancellations. I understand that when the board gets a request from a property owner for a tax cancellation.
We're a little bit off topic now.
No, it's not, it's related to the topic, that you're asking about, the, the property owner is asking for relief, and that the board wants to try and get that on the agenda as quickly as possible. All I'm saying is, my staff needs some lead time to research some of the issues, if it relates to a valuation issue, that's all.
Well, I think the treasurer gave your staff the notice in December, so I think that that was plenty of lead time for six months later to have a discussion in front of the board.
Which one are you talking about?
The one that, that prompted this request, about the 13 parcels that had the zero valuation due to staff error.
Last week, Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so that was a situation where, yes, the treasurer had asked about it, we gave them all the information on December 3rd, and.
And, and did not, and did not change the system.
And, and the treasurer did not enter it onto the agenda for six months. I don't know why that happened, but there's a lot of water that goes under the bridge in six months, and we're dealing with 98,000 parcels, so, yeah, it's after six months of time, you may not recall what it's about. So I'm just asking, I mean, if the board is not inclined to enhance the system, that's the board's prerogative, I'm just making a suggestion, that's all.
Commissioner Eberline, do you have any thoughts or questions on that?
I think that it's always going to be something that's going to fall out of the parameters that we do all the time, and so, you know, if, if we can be fluid with our generating information, might be a big, big, big change.
I just want to make sure we have staff here ready to answer questions, that's all, so. That translates into lead time.
So maybe it's, maybe what's, what's, what's needed is one of these, your staff members just come down here at the meetings at these times.
Provided that they are the right person that has the background and the information to know what went on, so.
And there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Huge moving parts in this, in this whole entity here. There, there's never going to be a perfect, perfect time.
Well, if there's no other questions, thank you. All right, the next item is in executive session, and we have public comments, so I'll ask if there's public comment. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to item code 742061A.
Commissioner Eberline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.